I don't. We need to be ourselves now.
Sublux are in the break room too.
It's I think we must have to talk about. That wearing probably this ring in regards to special events.
Yes.
So we'll talk about that, we'll get to that when we do.
Like I have a special event every year, so tell me, will we do that change by rules?
You know, about the city. Looking at taking over some special.
Oh, oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, so we'll talk about that.
We're all good at them.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's.
I just wanna say I'm here.
Hi Julia.
Hi guys.
I miss your face.
Can you see my face?
No.
Oh shoot, I gotta figure out how to do here, hang on, go ahead, I'll listen while I can sort that out.
You do have a forum, so we can, if people funnel in, we can.
There she is.
There you are.
Okay.
Do you have a roll call?
So.
Are they there? Are we calling to order now?
I call the meeting to order at twelve oh one. Debbie, can you do?
Well, sure. Commission members, Bima. Not yet, Sandoval.
Here.
Perfman, not yet, Berger.
Here.
Chukon, how do you say that?
Chukon.
Chukon. I need your first name. Hart, where'd you go?
She's gone.
Bye.
She was there.
She muted herself.
No, she would, it would show right here, she was still there.
Yeah, she locked us.
Trying to find her voice.
She's here though, and then care.
When we said.
So Peta, so Peta, that's I said, okay. Okay, so.
The Peta.
How do you say it?
The Peta.
So Peta, yeah.
I'm terrible with names, just.
Me too, it's fine, that's why I never correct anyone.
I mean, I'm. I believe it's going many different ways.
My name half of the day is Carla.
Carla.
Then the other half is Perla, and then I get Pearl, the ones who can't say Perla.
It's Perla, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and what's your first name?
Letizia.
Letizia. And Lori, that's easy, Lori's easy.
Yeah. Too much easier.
I'm Dr. Chukon.
Oh.
Hi. Hi everyone.
She's present now.
Okay.
Also member Hart was with us, hopefully she finds her way back.
Did she come by the camera outside?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause once she puts a camera, we saw her, but she.
And then she.
Two years ago.
Okay, well, now we can move on to the act of agenda. Item A is the Roger Brooks breakdown.
Yes. So, um, we spent a couple, couple meetings going over the Roger Brooks report. And I, sorry for typos, I haven't had time to proofread this right now. But I kind of sent out a few key takeaways, I broke this down into policies, design, tourism, and kind of like another. Um, category. So, um, over, over the next. Couple weeks, month or so, I, I would really like to look at this and. Add anything to it, change it, what we wanna do with this. Cause this, this will kind of set the boss, the, the tone going into the next item, what I kinda want this to turn into, which is an economic development plan. So happily go over these quickly, and then we can kind of talk about it right now. And to kind of get those wheels turning to see what we, um, what we think of a- as our next steps. So under policy. I put review the SMC and, and other plans associated. See, I had time to proofread it, uh, with economics development. So we don't have, we don't really have any economic development plans right now, and we really don't have any. Policies guiding us in the SMC. So, that's kind of where the economic development plan comes into place, and possibly in my, in my mind, and this is something we can discuss at a future date. Maybe a downtown, southern area plan, talk about revitalization of the downtown, that kind of thing. And we, we do have that one group that has kind of made a little bit of a blip, well foster, they're still doing some work in the background. So what they bring to us, we can probably work with that in the future as well. Um, so yeah, currently city sunny side is on having economic development plan or downtown development plan, I think getting these, cause that really. And I kinda get into that. An economic development's plan and strategy really describes sunny side's brand, it really tells our story, what we want, how we wanna move forward. So if we can communicate, um, to people who are looking to locate here, grow here, goods and services here. You know, how, how do we want that to, to be defined? Um, I think that's something that we really need to kind of put out there, say, hey, you know, we, we have these services here. Um, we're a tight knit community, um, if you wanna grow, grow here, this is a great place to grow, so. That's something that we can communicate through an economic development plan. And that would, that would be more or less a, a resolution put in or, in order to kind of, to begin that whole process. Um, next, policy, create a policy for the removal of vacant sign space, I think that's something that we've kind of all looked at in that Brooks report, that there's just kind of some dead space in the city. And it, it just really needs to be taken care of, things need to be tidied up a little bit. So that would be a policy item, and then create standards for, I think one of the big ones was screening for. Uh, garbage facilities, I think that we've kind of seen, seen this. And time and time again in the report, that, um, there are just some. There's a set of standard, so things are just kind of passively in the way, a lot of times. So I think those are some things that we can kind of move forward with easily setting policies. Are there any other policy, kind of like policy driven items that we might wanna throw out there?
This one? No.
Okay. That you, that you. Um, no, I'll think of. I'll throw one out there that I'm doing on the side, it's not necessarily part of this, but I'm gonna be working with our attorneys. This spring to, to do some sort of vacant, um, commercial register program, commercial building register program. We have a lot of vacant buildings that are just sitting there, their commercial space, thousands and thousands of square feet of commercial space that sit there. And do nothing but attract graffiti, so that's something I would like to change and set forward, but in a policy, so just things like those. Um, we can, it's definitely something I encourage you all to think about. Uh, especially policy driven stuff, things that might need to go to council, require a study session. Being that you are commissions, you have the council's ear, we can set up a workshop, and we have workshops at the beginning of every month with council. You know, we can, we can set aside a certain month, anytime you want to talk to them. Um, about an idea you have, we can certainly do that, so. Next item I have on there is design. So this is kind of one where you need to be a little bit creative, so if we, if we go forward and. We do a, an economic development plan, so this, the design is kind of what Roger Brooks is talking about. It's how do we want, this is how do we want to interact with the space, and how do we want the space to interact with us? So as we, as we walk. What do we, what do we want, do we want people to park and walk, do we want people to park, do we want people to walk? What do we want that to be split up through the city? We wanna soften the sods with planters, we want there to be a standard for like signage.
Thank you.
So as I, as we go through here. So feature and continue supportive facilities that encourage visitors to stay, walk, visit other businesses throughout the city. Um, redevelop street corridors that think about interconnectivity, so one of the big, big takeaways on like redeveloping is. The accessibility, so just, just simple things like, um. If we're redoing a street, are there sidewalks that carry, that carry pedestrian traffic to a building? What's the speed on those streets, um, there's, there's little things that we can do and, and think about every time we, we turn over a, a, a piece of dirt, or re, redevelop a piece of dirt, like. How we, how do we want that to look from a city's perspective, and then from like a new business perspective? Um, if somebody puts up, so there's a couple vacant lots in the downtown, if somebody builds a building, how do we want that to feel? Like, how do we want them to exit out into the street? I don't, yeah, so there's, there's something that we can, we can talk about, think about a little bit, and I would be happy to expand on. Like do a deep dive for each one of these items here, cause there's, there's a, there's a lot, there's a lot. And I'm by no means the expert, but I know a little bit about everything. So, um, the, developments upset standards, and that's kind of what these would be, is design, be design standards, and we can kind of. Encourage that through economic development and kind of build upon that. So, um, design standards can tell the story of sunny side, so this is where I get to my designs, not, not, it's not a theme, but, but standards. So, and the standards, I think we should, in my mind, should tell our story a little bit.
Yeah.
So. And I, that's, that's what you all here to, to do, so, um, and there's really cool ways to do, to do work like this. And that would be higher building shapes, building size, materials, um, you know, we're in a high desert. You know, late eighteen hundreds kind of settled town that's had a lot of growth and evolution throughout the years. How do, and how do we, how do we see ourselves really, it's kind of, it's more of like a exercise on how do we see ourselves, so. And there's really cool ways to do this, so. When we're talking about things like, we can, we can definitely reach out to different community groups, different community business groups, um, schools. Uh, other nonprofits, and we can do like fishbowl exercises where. Or where, you know, we, we have like a, uh, sort of, you, you would be the moderators more or less, but we have. A, like, like, uh, let's say, do we do something at the school, we rent out or get a little space at the school. Parents can be involved, kids can be involved, and we can break them into groups, we can say, okay, today we're going to be discussed, we're gonna. Be discussing these item, you know, sidewalks, windows, walkability, lighting, just kind of focus on those items, bring them into groups. Have them discuss sidewalks, okay, we're discussing sidewalks, go, and just let them kind of talk about sidewalks, get their feedback, and kind of. Build, build notes upon those items, um, and then, and then work it into a, and like an economic development plan. So, okay, here's the feedback that we've heard from our school groups, here's what they wanna see. How can we plan this out going forward? So there's some really, really, really cool ways to do this, um, and it's, it's actually like the fun part of planning, so. Um, and you guys, you, you can do that, this, this group gets to do that, so.
Yeah, I like the in-person, in-person version, like, like you're talking about, because if you get online, then you just get a whole bunch of negative, negative, negative.
Yeah.
And it's like.
Yeah. I think even like the distributed education. Where in the high school, they study business and all that already. So that would be a really good exercise for that, I mean, I, I don't say you need to single out one group. But I can see where that group with Howard and I had, that created my. Oh yeah, you know, just what their vision is, um, I mean.
Right, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Another one is working with group, like, um, one that I've done in the past is working with kids who are currently studying like economic, uh, economics or civics. So this is, this is the role that it, you know, you play as a, a resident of your city. Um, or, and this, the city is supposed to, you know, represent this, how can we interact, you know, so yeah, there's, there's a lot of cool ways to do it, and we can. Definitely think about that, school is in session, or if we wanna be with any other groups, um, we can definitely think about that as well. So, and you know, be. Thorough and creative and inclusive as possible, so that's kind of what I would likely do.
Would you like to set like a date, like a, a goal to make some of those?
Yeah.
Happen there, or we're not just throwing it out there?
Yeah.
Do we do that before spring or during spring, or?
Um, should probably do it. I guess that's up to you, uh, before spring, you probably have like a lot of. People who aren't here still, because when we get spring, then people are kind of.
Yeah.
Think about other.
Sometime in February.
Now we do.
Yeah. So I can, I can, I can. Bring a couple dates, cause our next meeting is February. Seven, and we schedule something towards the later part of February. Um, that would give us a little bit of time between our meeting and.
Get some questions and free strategy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we, yeah, if we wanna kind of start that process, and we can kind of.
Oh yeah.
See what it feels like, and then kind of. And replicate it, yeah.
Would it be called a public meeting, and what is that?
Oh yeah, it'd be a public meeting, yeah. Yeah, and just kind of like, look, just, just to get some feedback. I always like to encourage the positive thing, cause it's funny that you have stuff to talk about, always negative, so it's like, if you had a magic wand, what would you like to see, you know?
Yeah.
So, yeah, talk about the good stuff, yeah, cause we, we know all the bad stuff, yeah, that's, that's, so.
It's fun to do that, and then look and see what's been implemented from that, which would be really cool.
Yeah.
Like they're being heard.
Yes. I wasn't on that meeting.
And so here it is, and the, the cool thing that comes out of these meetings too, is like. The, the, these meetings, they always have like a policy idea that she'll, I'll never think of in a thousand years, so it will, will enable to see a lot of things that can be taken. Back and forth through to council, or the planning mission, or come back into this group, so it's, it's really cool to, um. Take it to, to kind of host, it's even, just, just to get familiar with.
Yeah, cool.
Um, it looks like.
Um, there it is here.
Yeah. Okay. Um, okay, so we'll, I'll, I'll get that going, um, and maybe, maybe the first meeting is at, you know, sunny side high school, and bringing, you know, stay on some others. Um, after school programs or something like that, so that, that one's easy, that's, that's good accessibility, and we, we have access, yeah, we can get to that pretty quickly. So, and they have regularly scheduled meetings, so maybe we're even part of something like that, so. Okay, so next I have on there, signs and wayfinding, so. Apparently there are some signs that exist, I just don't know who has them, and we just get to grab them and. Or public works needs to put them in, there's a lot of science on that, I don't know, I'll have to talk to Jane about this.
You need, really need to talk to Sid Pennard about it, is.
Yeah.
That she has that, and then. Maybe we could have her come, like. Just meet quickly at the next meeting, or can we meet a little bit before, or do you wanna talk to her, I'm, I mean, like, I'm happy to. Help that along, cause I know that they devoted an entire year to figuring out where the signs are, and what needs to be removed, and where, and what they feel like needs to be removed, and.
Yeah.
That's all, the whole, the presentation, I, I don't, I don't know that they've had any signs made, but. Definitely a place to look for their, and look at their efforts.
Yeah.
For sure.
Cause, cause that's kind of goes into the next thing is. Signs are all over the place in the city, so it's kind of, they're kind of around like these steel poles that are kind of like this, and. So, um, by, by looking into something like this, we can kind of set a tone, because we. You know, kind of set like a uniform standard that this is what the signs look like. You know, for, for city lots, um, city streets, downtown, all these kind of things, that just kind of make us look like we got our stuff together.
Yeah. And I think you talked about that at the last meeting, about, um, updating the, the signs, and then updating the free parking sign. And I think you were gonna look into what the department.
Yeah, so.
Budget.
Actually, yeah, so we were talking a little bit about that, and a little of the conversation went to council last night. So I think city hall might be looking at a new sign out front, and we're looking at some, some message in reader boards. Uh, but I think there's some momentum there, looking at the parking lot signs as well, so, um, as we move forward. Uh, maybe we will wanna come up with a design, uh, what those look like, how they. Get attention, yeah, what they're, what they're made out of, yeah. Um, so they.
Before they, before they go, just put some up, some up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, someone's been working on it, so you're a little.
I think, I think it's just the map, and I hope either stone signs here that need to be like condensed into one nice.
Yeah.
Uniform sign, and the hospitals not putting it in the right direction all the time, or. Library, and I think the fire department.
You know, that kind of that.
Yeah. So I think that's what, I think that's what. They're, I know that's what they're, they're not saying, oh, it needs to be these colors and this, um, it just is. Hillary wants it to happen, tell me, and I will. I will, so make that happen. That's good. Are you, you know, you, I mean, like, I didn't wanna, I'm just saying, like, I know that they've done a lot.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and, and I think this is a really good time for this discussion, because we're going to be revamping them at a couple city facilities. So yeah, I think it's a perfect timing, actually, right now. So we can, we can maybe. Um, add that as something for a future.
Like a deadline, a cutoff date, right? For that one as well.
What's that?
Okay, we should put like a, a date on that one as well.
Yeah, so I can bring it, I can bring it as an item for the future agenda.
Okay. Oh, I was gonna ask about the, it wasn't the fire department, then I put a LED.
Yeah, and they're, they're working on that right now, they have, I think, all their grant money together for that. Um, the next step is they need to probably go up to bid, um, cause they need to do the sign installation, that's, that'll take some time, so.
And, um, Martin, um, just as, as a addition to that, if you can hear me.
Yes.
Uh, where the city is also looking at putting out, you know, the, uh, gateway signs, kind of gateway signs, uh, at different locations. It'll be along the same line as the reader board, that's gonna go out by the fire department. And of course, that, the, it's a messaging board, I mean, the fire department's here, but there's also, here's events that are going on, so. Excited about that, and that's coming along, but the city is also looking at putting some out at a couple of the entrances into town. So we're kind of moving on that, and I re, but I, if I will, not mistaken, hadn't the public works been given the designs for some of those way, wayfinding?
Yeah, they have, they have been, and, um, I can bring those to our next meeting too, yeah, I would be happy to bring those.
In, in addition to whatever the, uh, Chris and her group have been working on. Because I think that we don't wanna, if we don't have to reinvent the wheel. If there's, you know, that, that'll get us that much further ahead. But I did wanna mention it, and, and as you did about the fire department sign, that we are working towards getting signs at a couple of entrances into town.
That's awesome. Yeah. Is it gonna be like the grand view entrance, kind of like the digital one?
Something similar to that.
Yeah, advertising, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
There'll be some advertising opportunities for those.
Yes.
Who like that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, there'll be an opportunity for anybody and everybody to, who wants to advertise there too.
Yeah.
To do it.
Are we getting first official price?
No.
Advertised in a grand view. Um, it's about three thousand some a year, but it just depends on how long you keep your listing up, it both make that good.
If you do it for, if you do it for like a year, it's like a hundred dollars per.
Yeah.
I, I am part of that, I don't like that. And so I was just curious, and like, is it even doable for any of these businesses in sunny side, if we do do it?
I, yeah, I think so. It, it probably depends on the, the amount of people participating to it, so, yeah.
Yeah, and then there, they have specials, like, um.
If you do a long contract.
Yeah. You create your budget based off of the seconds and how many times you want it to pop up and stuff like that.
It's like a newspaper, right?
Yeah, I saw advertisement on it on Facebook, and it was like. Enroll now, one hundred dollars a month. So there's different.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause when they really had it, and it was two hundred dollars flat.
Three hundred and some.
Very flat. But they only had probably that one contract, and now we probably have different ones.
Once you don't get as many people. Getting asked, they're gonna be like, okay, we need to pay for this.
Yeah.
Now, or at least have.
I think it's doable though, because the high school has one, and, and they're a little bit, they're on the same budget, and it's built like that, so I don't think.
They have business of over ten percent.
On their, on their scoreboard.
Yeah, I've seen it, but I haven't seen businesses. Maybe I don't pay enough attention when I go.
But there is opportunity, excuse me, there is opportunity to rent that space, the high school has been promoting that, uh, out there to stadium.
You're talking about?
Yeah. And so there is some opportunity there for some, some different kind of signage for businesses.
Yeah.
Supporting, supporting the teams in the school.
Yeah.
That's a cool deal.
So there's, there's a lot of good opportunity here, and I think we're at the right spot to kind of. For this committee to look at the, is, as we move forward. Okay. Next, well, okay, so that's the signage, next for design. I have that written down, limit the amount of, and it kind of goes back into signs, the amount of space allowed to be covered on commercial buildings. Um, so this, I know it's been a controversial, controversial thing, maybe in the past. Um, but if most city, most cities nationwide do not allow more than fifty percent window coverings.
Safety.
And safety, safety is the big thing, um, cause it, it limits, it limits first responders' visual. Visual, you know, accessibility into the building. And so that's, that's kind of something. And it just, yeah, so that's something we might want to address, and maybe have something. Concrete, uh, moving forward, so if you wanna think about that, it's.
How does that get enforced, just a question, how does that get enforced, once code enforcement, enforcement?
Yeah.
Wanna see then?
Yeah, so it would be a code enforcement.
Okay. I did notice something happened recently, uh, you know, how we always talked about that, uh, the. Parking situation as far as handicapped, or, or the time limits, people don't understand that, or they don't go by land, um. So I've seen someone get towed recently out of a handicap spot, so I was actually happy, I was like, oh hey. So, the tow trucking company got business, and that spot was rightfully.
Gonna return it around.
Right, exactly. Just, we need more enforcement, I would say, so, that's nice. That was good.
You just reminded me, I think that's another thing that we had discussed for the, um, the future, um. For designs and stuff for the city, was the limiting parking space, the time limit. Um, that was one that we had talked about last time. Was to do.
Well, my side.
Cause my side of there ones.
Boards.
Yeah, we have your force, so we talked about the thirty minute ones, and then the fifteen minute ones for people who are just gonna go in there and drop something off, your pickup.
Right.
And that problem is all the way from the cities.
Yeah, it's, it's a tricky one, because right now our policy. If anybody is parked. How they're not supposed to be parked, policies give them twenty-four hours, but we don't really. Take it right now, we, we give them a warning, says you're gonna get towed if you don't move your car within twenty-four hours. So we don't, so that's something might have to have a larger discussion.
Yeah, how do you change it? I mean, you can't give twenty-four hours for a ten minute party.
Yeah.
What about them, even they live in those apartments, for example, they park outside all the time.
That would qualify for hit, the current.
Yeah, so, so and maybe, maybe something. Yeah, so so and maybe maybe something for that. Maybe they need to get permits through the city, parking permits, and they have assigned parking at a certain location.
Oh, and they have a price for the parking, right? Yeah, let's make some money there, too. Yeah, because where are they gonna go? They have the parks. Behind though, the partners. Hmm it doesn't belong to the same owner.
Yeah.
Yeah, that I heard that from Lady. She's the one they inquire that she wanted to rent the space to park her car. And she said that she didn't rent the entire building. But there's free parking spots.
There's free, there's.
We don't speak of business, businesses that are those. Oh no, they're mostly empty. The one behind my office.
Yeah.
It it's mostly empty, yeah, the one I see every day.
And that's what I'm thinking, I'm thinking about the ones specifically behind your office. Just going through and re revamping that lots, uh making sure that the lighting's good. But that could be, that could be present parking for downtown and so.
And it'll open up all of those parking spaces.
Then those apartment people take those spots up, not all the time, but on the weekends. And they just start parking there and then you're trying to do business and so. Or like, you can't put a fifteen minute or twenty minute uh parking in front of Catalina's. Yeah, cuz you have appointments to go in there and do things, so it's like.
So that's.
They only have a few and big bigger cities, they only have like few thirty minute parking and that's as small as I've seen. What about parking meters? What do you guys think about that?
They're very expensive.
Yeah.
Um they're very expensive. What we could do is.
Eleven would just put some amazing ones that you just put a card to.
They each have a number and they, you only have these meters every so often, like Seattle and all that do that now.
Yeah, not just every spot, maybe just a few to try it out. Maybe on the main strip that's holy, or maybe we could try it there.
Yeah.
That's just.
Yeah.
If they're still there and they're not supposed to be there.
I think they send alerts to whoever.
How do they know if they're there or not, though?
It would be a number that all. Yeah, it prints out a little receipt and you leave it on your dash.
Right, but my question is. It's still like if you had a meter there, right? Cuz that box doesn't know you're there or left. How would that box, where you paid, how would they know you already left?
I think you check in after you you go back to your.
Well, it expires, so it expires, so they can check whether or not it's expired, yeah.
Right, but how do they know if you're still there or not, if we don't have somebody monitoring?
Somebody will get.
Yeah.
And I know some of them. Yeah. Over twenty four hours, but some, when you had the meter things, it was during a certain hour you had to pay the meter, after a certain hours you didn't have to pay.
You know what I mean, like?
Yeah.
Like, or whatever, a restaurant's on late and after business hours, whatever.
Yeah.
That's something that we can definitely put on our future agenda.
That could be, that could be an entire workshop with. That would be.
Yeah.
And it might even pay for that. Person who's gonna be in charge of it.
But yes, there's the potential there.
And I know that till companies will love it.
I know, when I see it other day, I'm like, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, not sad, not happy, but. A tow truck.
Yeah, there's another thing that could be a good thing, too, is because a lot of employees, I used to get. When we had a a front street. You know, instead of a parking lot where the sun has now, we used to have to park off off street. And then, you know, rush out to a fire somewhere and try to remember where you parked your car. And but free parking or city parking and and really. Advertising that and getting people to use that, but I do agree that there ought to be like fifteen loading. Fifteen minutes for loading, like over by where Corona Furniture Store is. Uh you know, or maybe something similar in front of Catalina, I can mention a minute ago. Something that would just be uh special for. You know, maybe there's a, they go in, maybe Catalina gives. A uh you know, like a part, what do they call those things? Uh validation?
Oh, yeah.
You know, kinda thing like. Yeah, that you put on your dash, your car, your car is validated as is supposed to be there. I don't know, but I do agree that we could bring that to a workshop and say, this is one of the things we're looking at. If the money from that, whatever kind of uh could also go back in towards. Uh maintaining the the units, but also as uh somebody, I can't remember who who said. Uh the pro the uh cost of having a. A a Mister, uh what was the guy's name that used to be the the meter meter boy? You remember, Debbie? It was back in the seventies, so. But anyways, anyways, but I do think, I think there's some real possibilities there, guys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can definitely explore that, that's a. That is both a policy and design issue, so. And I'm. The big perception of also pre-parking is parking is never free, it has to be paid for at some point in time, so.
Have to be drawn. Resurfacing.
Yeah, the resurfacing is the big killer, yeah, so. That's something we should probably think about, put on our.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it, but it, one of the best things about this, I think we have some sort of monitoring of the meters. Is that when we do have tourists come in, they get first shot. As opposed to our employees who like to park out in front, which was my point earlier. You know, um that, I got, I get, my boss was really, uh Tom Langto is a publisher. And he was death on us parking out in front of the building, in front of the office. No, you don't park there. I don't care where you park, but you're not parking in front of the building. Even if you're just popping in for a minute, grab the camera. Don't park.
Rightfully so, rightfully so, yeah, your customers.
This is for the customers. Anyway.
I just have one thing to say about parking lots. Is there reinforcement of for lighting in the parking lots? Because I have driven by Safeway. At night, I don't know if you guys, it is darker than dark and they they have lights, but they're not. They're not on, they're not. It's a dangerous parking lot to be in in the dark. That's good, so I don't know, like. And I was actually gonna call the the store manager and just ask him. About it.
That's a big change, you would think they have the funds to be like.
I know, I know, when he got. One of them is on, there's like six of them or so, and one of the sets of two has one light on. Our group, but I will call. Is it, you know, is it normal for you not to have lights at night?
But anyway, you know, we should have a policy about that.
About even like, I don't. It's dark, it's not that dark, they're still open, you know, lights.
Yeah, and a lot of cities do have lighting standards and require certain pathways to be lit going to and from a building. So, yeah, that's something we definitely look at some of this as well.
You'd think they would want good lighting for safety and also. If you don't go safe, goes there.
Walking up there, all the eyes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've talked about window coverings and I guess that also the other thing that goes into window window coverings, and this is a design thing, is. Are the bars on windows? So I would like to get away, go away from it, use alternative methods, use safety glass, there's a lot of other things that can be used besides the bars. Um I don't think they're that necessary all the time.
Who's only, is it the jewelry shop in town?
The jewelry, a couple corner stores and I think you drove past the daily deals place, but they did.
They did that?
The old age, I was.
It was together church.
Yes.
Together church totally remodeled. Next to um Fashion Corner.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the pawn store.
So.
We're so used to that one.
Changes, like if we, like the fifty percent on the windows and the bars and stuff. Do, are they grandfathered in or do?
They're grandfathered in, but we can encourage them to change them.
Yeah.
And no new ones, though, for sure.
No, yeah, no.
It doesn't, it doesn't let everybody else know.
Yeah, if if they take them down to replace them, they take, they take them down, they can't replace that kind of. So.
Okay, well.
So we can address that, it just.
We need to do that right away, cuz. We just get more and more. You say, okay, what we want to accomplish, but what happens? What is the protocol? I mean, I know we're talking about it, but what does this take?
So, so then we come on, so then, that's a good question, so. So we have, we have our zoning ordinance, and in that zoning ordinance, we have. Um a set of general regulations in the city, and those general regulations are. Regulations that every new business that are building or development that comes to the city that they need to buy by. Um a lot of it talks about lot coverage and setbacks and parking, paving, that kind of stuff. But we don't really dive too deep into the weeds on um design stuff like bars on windows. We don't really talk about that, we don't even talk about window coverings, that kind of stuff. All we would need to do is um. You can ask me to draft something and I could throw it in there. And put it as part of that chapter.
Do you need that in a email? Or do you need to just say, I I really think we need to draft something, we're getting new businesses all the time.
So what you could say is um. I make a motion for staff to research. Uh design standards, putting bars on windows, bring back a deliverable for the next meeting, um I can bring you something. And then you can make a motion at that point to whatever you pick apart out of that. Um to to take that to council, so.
Would that be when you have coverage too, you have to vote on that as well, or is that already in the code?
Window coverage is not, so you can, you can kind of like and.
Yeah.
So. So you could do that.
Yeah, because I can do those.
Okay, um well then, I make a motion, I present this to um to the window cover. And the bars.
We should find out with the fire code and see if they have anything on the fire code that they can't have bars on.
And that would be part of my research.
So we, if if there, excuse me, is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah, yes.
Has it been seconded?
We haven't finished. Trying to figure out uh what all they wanna add into the motion, before I complete it, so.
Okay, I was, I just, I wasn't sure what was going on there for a minute, and if we needed a second, I was gonna.
Okay, so I make a motion to do the research. For the window coverings and the bars on the windows and doors.
Doors.
Doors, okay.
Okay, Julie, it's your turn. I second the motion.
You gotta stand, have approval.
And then there'd be, and then after a motion is made, there'd be a roll call, or you can, all those, and then you can do it either way.
All those in agree, in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, motion me.
So I would, so I will bring you, I will do some research on window, window coverings, window bars and doors. Uh well, bars and windows and doors, bring that back to you, and I'll bring you back what maybe an example ordinance might look like. And uh we can go from there. Well, that's exciting.
As a matter of um. Also, you were talking about parking lots. Is that something that we need to do more research on as to what areas? Need to have more lights, maybe need to have. Uh if there are city parking lots that that are free parking, maybe it has to come to, you know. So mo- some sort of recommendation to the council to say, is there something we can do about keeping those um safer? Um and then.
I I don't wanna cut you off too early, but um I I'm, I think that might be part of that Americo presentation that we've been, I think that's the company. That we've been putting up.
Yes, yes, you're right, I I pardon me, yes, that's exactly right, they're supposed to come give us a presentation on that, so.
Yeah.
I'll keep that, I'll keep that under my, under my, under my hat for a bit, then. If something else comes up, then I'll jump.
So I've got two minutes left, um so talking about that. Um so next, next part about design standards would be um. Curb appeal and accessibility, so I kind of brought this up a little bit earlier. But um and that kind of goes in the next thing, too, is softening up the exterior of the buildings um. We can be, we can encourage people to use certain colors or certain materials on there, I don't think we can require. Cuz um there's this whole freedom of speech thing that I think is really touchy when it comes to like. What qualifies as a sign, how this and that works, but we can, we can strongly encourage people. Um so that's something we can look at is, um do we wanna encourage? Things like sidewalk cafes, planters, seating. Um how do we, how do we want the entrance to be perceived? Do you, when you, when you exit a building? Do we want that to be immediately into the sidewalk, or do we want there to be like a. Like a little pad or something like that that you step out onto first? Um there's a lot of ways we can think about that, you can also think about this, not only in the downtown, but also in like strip developments, small type developments. Um how how do you want that to feel? If you, do you want parking to be the focus? Do you want? Um maybe drive aisles, but then that come to like a center walk lane? There's a lot of ways we can think about this um moving forward, so uh we could. Again, do a deep dive on something like that, um and that would go into the entire parking conversation as well, so.
Yeah.
Um cuz, yeah, we can, we can definitely talk about that.
Okay. Yeah, the the planters and flowers. That's part of going back to our standard design, we we all agreed at one point that we all wanted what's that, so. I would definitely add that in there.
It's not, it's not parking right out front, having a meander. Right, uh when you leave that building to set the tone as you're walking in to set the tone. And also as you're leaving to, as a reminder, just, you know, it's be it's beauty and then you walk, you don't walk.
Yeah.
You don't walk into a bumper for at least, you know, fifteen, twenty feet.
So sidewalk cafes, outdoor eating, outdoor drink area.
Yeah. I mean, we have. Always talk about the amount of sunshine we have and.
Yeah.
The amount of outdoor eating does not match the amount of sunshine we have.
Do we need to have a motion to add that on there or no, just your part of what?
It's part of this, yeah. So that's kind of what I have for design, so I encourage you to, yeah, continue to think about that. And um I can do, definitely do like a deep dive into. You know, context and content and design standards and height and um the pedestrian pedestrian perspective and all that other stuff. If you, if we wanna talk about that, we can, it's, it's pretty fun um.
Although we do have planters downtown. And so. We have, I know that we're not talking about downtown. we have, I know that we're not talking about downtown, just downtown. But we have planters that are downtown that need help be maintained. So I don't wanna lose focus of what we already have and have had, have spent a lot of money on, to let those go.
Exactly.
And not, you know, as we're moving forward, it'd be nice to have it all come in together.
Yes.
And I don't know how, how can we help with that?
Um, that might be a parks public, that might be a parks question, I'll talk to Jameson about that a little bit, but yeah.
Adding to that, the last time we talked, you also, we're gonna look into getting an answer about taking out, taking out those trees that were leaving all that.
Oh, right, right, right.
We're gonna replace the trees with something.
Up for that most too.
I was on the, um, at the square, turn about square.
No, during the sidewalk, the next to the, near the sun.
Sid, you're muted. Julia, you're muted.
Yeah.
That's okay, I'm just nodding my head.
Oh, okay.
Were you asking, were you asking me a question?
Um, the trees, I think they are next to the sun and then there are some, uh, right on the side of, part of a lot of US things, do they have berries on them?
Yes.
Okay, that's what it was.
Like berries.
Nasty. The post office is dangerous.
Yeah.
Those things are slick.
Yeah.
I don't know about that tree, but that tree should not be there.
Yeah, so, I think through, I think they're very, very.
Excuse me, I think it's, there, I think it's, there is, um, there. A, I think we're doing something city wise, as far as the sidewalks, take out some of those nastier trees.
Yeah.
I'm entirely sure what we're replacing them with, or if we are replacing them, I would have to uh, check with Shane on that. Shane Fisher, our public works person, because he's kind of, uh, he would, I know that this council was concerned about those trees, and remember when we had diseased ones out on that way, we took out a bunch of trees and then we took a lot of new ones in, but we were trying to research what kind would be suitable, and I think that the problem with the trees that we have downtown is they're not all the same, there's not a uniform tree. And I think that in, plus the other issues of the roots and so forth. But, um, but it, it occurs to me that we've talked about that on the council level. But I do think, you know, talking about the trees that their uh, their leaves and stuff and the berries and things are unsightly. Um. But there's.
Yeah.
I can't remember, I, Martin, uh, Trevor, do you, do you remember?
Um, I know we've, we've talked about it, and I know we've talked about putting together a tree list, um, I'm gonna make myself a, a, a note here.
A little would want a sunflower tree.
Right? Can I make a recommendation?
The city.
That this, you know, there's some uh, trees in the parking of the mall, the valley, the Sunny City Mall, um, they're like a, or literally like a purple tree, it looks, it's so gorgeous, and it's no fruit.
Uh, yeah, there, there's, so there's a lot of trees that do bright purple really well in this climate that don't bear fruit.
I don't remember the name, I'm gonna plant those in my house.
Yeah.
I have them though, I can, I look for them, yeah.
With the lush.
I think with the trees, like apple, it's purple, so it's so bright, I mean, it's really, no. Yeah, that's, you know, for a lot of the, and the green, for year.
Oh, that's nice.
And one of them, side pair, it's a flower and pear, mounted up to make, they're, they're beautiful, they're a group, pretty green. I think it's the name of that, it's pretty like, you know.
Yeah.
I will.
At, at the valley mall.
Okay, at the valley, I hope to a future.
Yeah.
So all the trees downtown are cities then, they're not there, okay, I thought that was the post offices, okay. If it, if it's out in the sidewalk area, that, that's, that's city.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, running short in time, so I just wanna finish up my little list here quickly. Um, so next is tourism, um, it's pretty, the big thing we need to do is, uh, work on our website, I think is a big thing, work on our website, work on our marketing. Um, and that would be part of this whole, this whole project.
Are you working on that right now?
Well, now I'm working, I'm working on it now, um, I hope to this year, so.
We should get an app, people are more likely to use an app than a website.
Yeah, and, and we, we can do that, yeah, that's.
Kind of checking the businesses, rate businesses right away, we can have our own little. That'd be so cool.
You can get that going for us, okay?
I could motion, great.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just.
No, that, that is a great idea, that's fine.
Imagine, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, sorry, and then the other part, then I have another on there, it's, um, it's just more or less talking about building partnerships, um, using, uh, um, this committee, um, and the city and uh, building partnerships, um, to help kind of implement these, the different factors above. So, uh, and then all of this runs out to hopefully creating an economic development plan, so that's, that's the kind of, the idea. So that's, um, again, I encourage you to think, think some more about this, I have some deliverables for the next time we meet, uh, but yeah, re- expand on this, um, we'll talk, we can talk about it, absolutely.
That's good. Okay, any items from the committee members?
I am not, um, suggestion, I think. Um, I bought my building finally, so I am right across from the hospital now, renovating and should be moved in by the second. So, I got a total of two lots, so, um, it's one thousand East Edison, and then I think the other lot, the parking lot is a whole separate uh, parcel, and I think it's one thousand three.
Is that the, it used to be part of the hospital office, right?
HR department was there for about a few years, and then.
So it's going across some voters old.
Hmm, no, it's on this street.
On this street, oh, okay, it's so, is that the? Yeah.
Yes, right next to the doctor's statement, it's over there.
But I'm on the, my, can I on the other side?
Okay, good. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Nice.
Okay, I heard, any items from the staff members?
Uh, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. And I, cause we adjourned the meeting at twelve fifty six?
Now, I'm. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good rest of your day.
Thank you, Julia. Don't forget to stop by my office, Julia.
O- okay. Why?